Welcome to the Oshkosh area school district board of education meeting for May 23rd, 2018. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Here.
Eliza?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Homestead?
Here.
Heschel?
Here.
Do you have a call?
All right, I would invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance. We're being led this evening by two students from Washington Elementary School, Miles Van Thiel and Demetrius Naum. The boys.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which
One of the things that's very important to school boards is student learning and this after or this evening, we have the opportunity to recognize many of our students for their achievement in the area of art. We have not only talented students but talented art teachers in this district as well. So, Mr. Mack, I believe, is going to do the honors of reading the names. The examples of the student artwork can be found up on the screen as well as around this building and I get the honor of handing out the certificates for the students to take home this evening. Mr. Mack?
Sure, and as soon as Dr. Herzog makes her way over to the presentation area, I will begin with announcing the names and it looks like we have a good number attending tonight.
So, first recognition is for the work of Kelsey Bessler.
Kelsey not here. For Ha Li Tao. Is Ha Li here? Willow Hun. Come forward. If your name is called, please do come forward to receive. Jenna Von Holson. Bella Salisbury. Pa Hu Chu Alor. Pa Lo Llor. Pa Llor. Thor Windsor. We're striking out often tonight.
Beautiful night outside.
Sydney Q. Keegan Reese Riss. Gabriella Piera De Sova. Matlin Maxwell. That completes our recognition for this evening and we appreciate parents taking time to bring your children to be recognized this evening. And we want you to be well aware that you are, this is a public meeting, so you're well aware to stay, but we also know and we do it this hour, that evening is short. It's a beautiful evening and you may not want to stay for the rest of the evening, but you're certainly welcome to.
Let's have another round of applause for all the students. How about a round of applause for all the art teachers? The Oshkosh area school district board of education and the Oshkosh area school district council have been meeting on a somewhat irregular basis over the course of a couple of years and tonight happens to be one of those nights. So, we're delighted to welcome you to our locale. I believe the last time we met was January and we were in the council chambers. So, we're happy to be the entertainers here tonight. We have a couple of items we wanted to be sure and discuss and provide opportunity for members of the council, the city council and the board to provide input on and those areas are security, transportation and refugee outreach. So, we'll be starting with security. I'm not sure who's leading us off.
Well, I'll probably start. I know that the school district is eligible for some grants at the state level and Chief Smith and his staff have been working with representatives from the school district staff to identify what may be the appropriate expenditures. My understanding is that this isn't for any staffing or anything of that nature. It's more for capital or one-time type of expenditure. So, I'm not sure, Chief, who necessarily you've been working with at the district?
There he is. Dr. Jones and his staff and certainly with Stan's input have been working very hard at developing the grant return. It's a very aggressive timeframe for this grant return. It's due the 8th, I believe.
Right.
The 8th of June. And the staff has been working really hard to put the grant together primarily looking at window film which creates essentially a shadow proof or a slower entry into a school based upon what we've seen at school shootings that have occurred across the country. It allows the window to stay together in the event somebody tries to break it out. And they're also looking to upgrade the Phase 2, if I recall, of the camera system throughout all the schools, which allows access to the video feeds for not only the school district but also first responders in the event that there's an emergency within a school itself. And that's primarily the funding that we believe is going to, it's going to be allocated to. There's a potential for some software for us to use that we can hopefully find folks that want to harm our kids before they actually do it. And we hope to be able to put that in there as well. And that will cover that grant for the, at least for the Oshkosh area school district.
And this evening, we circulated to members of the board of education as well as to leadership members of council and mayor and chief of police along with Vicki Cartwright and I co-signing a letter of endorsement for this application. The process is very simple, very straightforward and, but we discovered early on that limitations. We had all kinds of dreams of having more money, more dollars, but we discovered that one of the criteria, and we could hardly believe this, was that the first priority in the state of Wisconsin will be going to schools to put locks on classroom doors. And apparently, there are a lot of classroom doors in the state of Wisconsin that don't have locks on them. And that's the first priority across the state. Now, we qualify for none of that because we have locks on all of our classroom doors, but we discovered that that consumes a good amount of the dollars and we didn't believe that there could be that many classroom doors in the state of Wisconsin without locks on them, but we have to comply and this goes not through the Department of Public Instruction but through the Attorney General's office. And we're complying with and applying for everything we qualify for and will hopefully receive it and apparently the cash turnaround is rather quickly, so it's not a cash flow issue, but our submission will guarantee a return on all that we ask for as long as we ask for things in the priority established by the state. So, we're looking forward to that action and taking care of that and the grant. Sarah Poquette, one of our elementary principals on our emergency preparedness team, has been writing the grant for us. She's nearly complete and will have it done well in advance of the 8th of June application deadline.
What's the total amount of grant funding available and what are?
Well, a hundred million dollars and we may qualify in total, I believe, Andy, the cumulative total including that for about $400,000 or thereabouts will be our total allocation. If it was distributed evenly across the state, our proportional share should have been closer to $900,000 to $1 million, but that interesting detour on having to fund classroom door locks across the state takes a big chunk out of the issue.
The $400,000 that we're anticipating, how much are we, how much will the school district be investing?
It will.
I mean, will it be, I mean, is it basically that?
100%.
Will we be putting more than $400,000 in?
We already have, that's why our limitation is. We've had a sizable, our last referendum invested a significant portion already in the cameras and all. We're looking at is what we couldn't afford from the previous referendum and that is so more than 50% of the total investment has already been invested by the school district.
I was at a recent statewide meeting where there were some superintendents present and I was surprised at the number who talked about not having secured doors, outer doors like we do in the system here where there's one designated door and you have to be buzzed in. That is not universal across the state. So, beyond inside door, classroom door locks, outer door locks are not necessarily the norm throughout the state.
Could, the reason that some of these school districts are like that is because they're afraid of spending money? Because they, you know, and I applaud the school district for going to the taxpayers and saying, we need, you know, here's what we need to do.
Yeah, I couldn't speculate on their reasons. I'm sure there are numerous ones across the district but, or across the state, but my assumption is that, you know, and remember there are, the Oshkosh area school district's about 11th largest district in the state of Wisconsin. There are many, many tiny school districts that are 200, 300 students and in very tiny communities and the thought of basic security investments is, has never been in the forefront for them. And you also need to remember that this grant goes to all public and non-public schools as well. And so, you're serving many small religious or parochial schools as well to get to that standard and my assumption would be that there are a fair number of those consuming for the first time classroom door locks.
And couldn't some of the smaller school districts also be impacted by the disparity in state funding for education?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
But to your point, Stan, I'd like to take a little kudos to that. Your predecessor was very aggressive with crime prevention in the schools. When I was still with the sheriff's office, he reached out to the Oshkosh Police Department, the sheriff's office, which I worked for, and Northeast Wisconsin Crime Prevention Officers. We did security surveys of all the schools in the Oshkosh School District, the Allen School District and Winnicott County School Districts and did a lot of the safety measures that are in place now. So, yes, we aren't eligible for all the money, but we've been on the forefront for safer schools for a very long time in the Oshkosh School District and Southern Winnieville Colony. And NINA Manasha in that area was covered by the NINA, Manasha Police Departments, but those security surveys are probably still available and still prevalent and still have some areas that could still be looked at if there are some gaps that.
To your point, Steve, we, approximately three months ago, I charged all of our SROs with going to each school and doing threat assessments of all the schools. We're updating all the plans where we've looked at gaps where we found that maybe there are areas that whether the school district or the police department, we can do something different and we've identified those areas. We're working closely with the administration to, these are recommendations from the officers that are there every single day. These are the officers who know where the weaknesses may be and we're working really closely to try to fix some of those weaknesses, recognizing some of them are capital expenditures that will require some time to get done.
Sure.
Creating vestibules within the schools themselves as a point of entry. Some of them are simply just, we need to change how we operate and it's an easy fix just by driving it by policy. Some of the gaps that we identify, propping a door open, an exterior door, we need to fix that. It's an easy fix. We just need as leaders within the schools to address those things by having our staffs doing the right thing by the schools. And some of them, again, are infrastructure changes, but they're working on the elementary schools now. They've finished the two high schools and I believe the middle schools and now they've moved on to the elementary schools.
Does any of these grant dollars, Mr. Mack, go towards school resource officers?
No, none of it. And it's one-time only money, so you certainly don't want to put it into salaries because you'll have a giant cliff at the end of it and it would not be. But I think also, in addition to the previous era of school security, one of the things that this district implemented with its resources it had, beginning in December, January of December 2012, January 2013, in light of the terrible reminders of the Connecticut Elementary School shooting, we, for the first time, engaged in the existing camera and door entry lock and buzzing in buildings that is required in all the schools and we did that immediately as a safety and security measure. We were hoping by this grant, because remember, technology lasts usually five to six years, we were hoping that this grant would allow us the ability to upgrade every one of those entrance stations because they wear out and with both the cameras as well as the buzz-in system, any piece of technology, three to five years or three to six years is life expectancy. And we were hoping to do that. We were unable to do that for that and we'll just keep holding those others together at this time. Then in the 2016 referendum, we had a particular set aside that was for the camera upgrade of which the study indicated that we could accomplish X number of camera goals and, but we also had developed a study that was extensive that said if we had more dollars, this would be available. And that's, that preparation work is now benefiting us very quickly on this grant because we had a list of unmet needs in the security camera area that allows us to instantly flow into qualifying piece of that grant. And so, that, this current grant. And so, we're in not extensive, great shape, but we are certainly in the best shape that's possible based on current law and current available funds. The chief's comments on, as are very true. We are moving with our whole facility study and part of what our architectural firm that is working on has developed for us is reverse or changing the entry security system in each of our floor plans that would be an early on project that would create entrances more similar to what we have in Jefferson School, which is the correct type of entry and more to Oaklawn School. Those are our newest generation of schools that have double entry and secure and actually have the offices near the door as opposed to having to walk a block and a half or something like that to get to the schools. So, we are undertaking that study and creating a list of those projects that as a part of our overall facilities renovation study that will allow us to tackle and secure those entrances in a way. We, of course, don't have the capital to do that at this time, but they will go on a list of what the board will consider in the future to go to the community on for potentially referendum package. In the ideal world, that state allocation would have provided funding for us to do several more of those, but frankly, we have the vast majority of our schools who need that entrance fix to control entry into the building at, to a great extent. So, we're in a good position. Dr. Jones, you had a couple of comments to add to this.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that according to the grant, can specifically answer some of the questions with the grant, we have more than 23 facilities in the Oshkosh area school district and the grant only funds pupil occupied buildings. For example, we will be bringing to the board some amount to do some of the same things we've done at the schools per se. For example, this building is not counting, does not qualify for the grant. Central us because there's no students here, it does not qualify. So, we will be taking the same measures that we've done at our own cost for some of the other buildings so that the entire district is covered similarly, but the grant will only cover pupil occupied buildings, which numbers 23.
Do those new windows ever going to be installed? They come with that film already?
At West?
Hun?
Not to my knowledge, no.
But they.
A good thing for them to do.
Right. Well, that new film, because of energy conservation, has kind of a double qualifier that Jim has worked with, our director, our director of facilities and frankly, from our last energy retrofit levy, we will be in a position to deal with, as Jim is indicating, the glass on that, so there will be both energy efficiency but also the retrofit. And their strength of that film material is greater than the film material that's been identified as the entry level to prevent play. Allegedly, that other film material has resilience to being shot at. And so, we're hoping that West will qualify for that, not under the energy grant, but will be a part of the retrofit because of all the glass that exists in, at West high school hallways and entrances. So, and that study was well underway late fall before all of this surfaced. So, we're looking forward to the potential of having a double win on that one without the energy grant.
You have to be specific, you know, that we are going to be, you know, replacing many of the windows at West. We're only talking about two entrances that the grant will cover. That would be, and they're very specific even on windows that are above or small, you know, viewing windows, they don't even qualify. The other thing that you mentioned is that we'll be, through the CSO, since many of the schools are doing the same things we are, we'll be using the buying power of CSO to drive down the cost, for example, for the film that the chief had mentioned as an example.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
So, Andy, can I ask a clarifying question to you? So, is that two entrances per school or is that just two entrances of a pupil occupied building in the district?
Great question, Bob, as a clarifier. Only, only the main entrance of the building, West is, happens to have two. All other buildings would be one.
All right, so it is, it is every school at their main entrances?
Their main entrances, correct. West happens to have two, so does North. All the rest of the schools have one entry.
All right. My next question, I think, maybe a sensitive question, I don't know. So, thinking critically about the window film and watching the instances that have taken place across the country in regards to school shootings, what is the benefit of having window filmed, filmed windows at our entrances when what we're seeing is that all of the activities, the illegal activities that are causing the most harm are taking place from within the school? What are we doing in regards to reducing that? So, does that make sense? I mean, I don't, I don't hear a lot of, I don't hear a lot of instances where someone's shooting outside of the school.
If I can address that, I had the opportunity to listen to one of the parents of the Sandy Hook shooting. She lost her daughter in the shooting. She's now one of the principals of Safe Schools. I'm sure you've heard of that group. One of the telling things that came out of that, and it was very simple, was that the shooter at Sandy Hook, he entered the school by shooting the window out and he had immediate access into the school. Alls he did was fire in the school, the glass shattered, he walked right in. Any door lock that was out there would not have stopped him because of the glass, the glass on the entryway to the doors for the school. That's the premise that they're looking at is trying to slow down on entry. Not going to stop people from getting in that way, but it will certainly slow them down and it's our hope that by slowing them down, it'll allow our school resource officers, our on-duty officers to get there and take care of any issues that are occurring in a timely manner, hopefully slowing things down.
Okay. And Bob, none of what I have seen short of buildings or schools becoming effectively banks or with bulletproof glass or with, there, all of this is, as the chief describes in every training session I've been in, it's all a matter of slowing down because we have, there are not either the resources unfortunately nor a solution to effectively stop an individual intent, but the chief's position, and I echo every presentation I've heard, is it's a matter of slowing individuals down to allow security personnel to engage and to also, under the training that we have provided with, with all of our, all of our staff and students with using the Alice training is to deal with the run, hide, fight process of getting away because stopping things is not probable, but that combined with the Alice training that we've done throughout the district of getting people to, hearing the noise and being able to do their very best to get out of the line of fire.
Bob, if I may, just to go back, as a principal in the district, the relationships that we have and the response time of the sheriff's department, police department, our safety, fire department is unbelievable. It was literally seconds, within 30 seconds, the first officer arrived when we had an emergency situation and response time was unbelievable and response was overwhelming. Several times that I had to use emergency number, call 911. I had sheriff's departments, I had detectives, I had, response time is unbelievable. So, again, I think echoing everything that the chief and Stan said, adding that on, you know, really makes our district quite unique, I think, in an applaud to both law enforcement and our. and our EMS people.
I had a question. You had said that the doors lock. On Facebook, I've seen those videos about the jams that go on the bottom of the doors. Would that be something we'd be invested in?
Yeah, we, all of those become vetoes from our fire departments because they take away our ability to deal with escape. There are hundreds of things and I think there's hardly a day that goes by where I don't electronically get some device that is the latest cure-all. And we work on our security team with the district, the Epcot team, and, and the interpretation from our fire department, that being the Oshkosh area, the Oshkosh Fire Department, is that we would violate code by potentially having students trapped in a classroom because of, in a crisis, not easily having any of those devices removed.
So, everybody's cities are totally different with codes?
Yeah, well, to a certain extent, we're also quoted on state code on the issue, but that some of the fire codes are state and federal, but especially state. But, but we operate, we comply and do everything that our police department tells us to do in the sheriff's department, but we also comply with, with our fire department and not being cited for safety code violation.
I had two high school students from a private school write to me and suggest that we purchase those, one of those devices is called the Barracuda. And I saw that demonstrated on Facebook at one point and it looked like it was effective, but if it's going to be a problem for law enforcement to get inside those rooms and rescue students, then that would be problematic.
So, one more question.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just kind of talk a little bit more about the camera system. So, I think there's an important element that you're talking about there in regards to being able to see real time what's taking place to emergency responders, right? Or the fire department, the police department can see that, correct?
Yes.
So, and that's, and that would be something that's hooked up, that would be connected to every one of our schools, correctly?
Correct. What happened several years ago as we deployed the first round of cameras, we divided it into what we called Priority One and Priority Two, I believe is three?
Yeah, there's three priorities.
Three, three priorities, three levels. Our two high schools, we decided as a district that we would do both Priority One and Priority Two. These priorities, by the way, we sat down with law enforcement, our school resource officers, our head maintenance people, the principal and others to define where, what location these cameras should be placed in and then, then worked with the installers and the companies that do these, the video install. High schools, I said, we did cover all of, all of locations one and two, or priorities one and two, and all priorities in the middle and level one in middle and elementary. And this would, this money, this grant would get us to covering all, all throughout the district, level one and level two. Would that be correct?
Yeah, the Priority, the Priority One cameras covered the main entry areas, the exit areas, student pickup and drop-off areas. They did not cover things like second floor. So, if you go to some of our schools, our middle schools, our elementary schools that have multiple floors, there are no cameras up on the other floors. Priority, those were considered Priority Two cameras. So, we covered the entry points, we didn't cover necessarily second floor. So, this plan will cover all of those Priority Two cameras as well. There's some Priority Three cameras that are certainly nice to have, but are not necessarily as important as some of those Priority Two cameras that we put into the plan.
So, so right now, the cameras that we have installed, if there were an incident, do they, do they, are they, do they go direct, are they, does the law enforcement and fire department or emergency responders see what that is at this point?
What would normally happen in our emergency response plan, if something happened, we would have, kick in our incident command structure. We most likely would have a representative from law enforcement probably physically here at this building. We have a setup station where we would bring that up for them to view whatever cameras are running. Typically, what happens is we get a request for information. We archive all of that data for a period of a minimum of thirty days. Right now, it actually goes out to about forty-five days of video retrieval before it gets overwritten. If there is ever an incident and we are doing an investigation, all of that data is immediately pulled off, archived permanently at that, or until such time as the investigation has been concluded. So, there's live real time, there's also arc, we can always do a quick look back at a given point in time from any or all of the cameras.
To your point, we are working towards getting the camera access into all of our squads as well as our C-COV vehicle. So, if we do have to respond to an incident at a school, the officers that are responding will have live feed of that, of the schools. We're just working on the infrastructure right now to get that-
Yeah, okay, Bob, I guess one point to point out that hasn't been mentioned is, is our, it's web-based.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we don't have to have a hard point.
Sure.
They just have to have a access to their net and then it's web-based, okay?
Okay.
But there's two things that are required. We have to set up a VPN from squads into our network. That's the easy part. The other part is to set up an agreement with the, with the city and the school district that where we allow them to do that. We have both of those ready to go.
Okay.
And having worked with the capability of sitting in squad cars with, with officers tracking that in Minnesota experience, I can tell you that I have observed being able to track students in a, in a break-in, not in a threat situation, but to be able to observe, watch students following through in a building and, and have officers greet them at their intended exit simply by tracking them. And it's a wonderful system and we intend to be there.
I'm sure that we covered this topic pretty well.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you. Law enforcement and our fire department for working with our district to get that grant proposal written and up to the state so that we can be in that implementation process. Thank you to everybody involved. Moving on then, transportation. This was a topic that we also addressed back in January. There were, excuse me, representatives from ESTER who had written to many of us in advance and who also attended that meeting, who are proponents of providing bus transportation to students. And there's some other busing issues out there as well for second shift workers. Our emphasis, I think, is really on the K-12 students. And I know that board member Bob Peschel has held special meeting to get some additional dialogue going on that. So, let's open up the discussion on transportation.
Sure. So, I guess the first thing is how many, how many are you, is everyone up to date with kind of what took place in that, in that meeting that took place last month or earlier this month? So, do we need a synopsis of that meeting?
Yeah, we do.
We do for people watching. Sure, sure. So, we, several school board members and a council representative and a council, not a council, a staff representative of the city, and many community members were present at the library on May third where we discussed kind of a historical overview of transportation in the community, what's out there for families to be able to access and to utilize, what, what sources, where, you know, where does that come from? Where can you go, go get a free bus pass? That type of stuff. Eventually, the conversation kind of led to what are, what are our ideas of solving, or not necessarily solving, but creating more access for K through twelve children in Oshkosh via the bus system. So, and I think the couple ideas that we came up with was, one was, was a wheel, wheel tax or wheel fee came up for discussion. There was discussion of the school district taking on full payment of the community resource officer and then the city taking on the, the business side of providing bus transportation to all, all schools, or all Oshkosh area school kids. One idea was that the city of Oshkosh, just make it happen.
The other idea was that the school district just make it happen?
Yeah. It's reciprocal.
The issue is fifty thousand dollars happening.
Yeah, and that was-
And that fee is not growing anywhere.
That's a different, that's a different number. I mean, the number that we were talking about was closer to seventy thousand. There was a discussion about revenue agreements. And that's kind of where we left it at was, was those were the kind of, if, correct me if I'm wrong, those were the ideas that I think came out of, came out of that meeting.
I, I hear the city solving the problem and I hear the school district solving the problem. What about the organizations such as ESTER and those types of organizations? You know, run the government for, is, is that I understand the issue, but the question is simply that. What about private sector addressing the issue?
So, there was talk about organizations that already invest in providing bus passes to students and to their constituents and such, and so there was, there was, there was also conversation about, kind of what you're talking about, Tom, is having kind of a greater community-wide fundraising effort to create funding avenues along this line. That was one of the ideas that was, that was put out there and most specifically working with creating a fund much similar to what ESTER has already done in regards to creating a transportation fund that would help, you know, expand that access through that way. So, that's definitely out there. I, we just put it out there as, as the conversation. I think we all have our ideas of which ones we like best. I mean, I'm not biased as to what I like, so, but I think that's just the initial conversation. The next step is bringing it back to us and just kind of hashing out where we want to go with that.
Another, if I may, another thing that was brought up and we did have some exchange of information and that was the contract that the school district has with Colbusin outside of the other types of busing that's taking place and whether or not because of hazards that the city does have control over in terms of, let's say, for example, missing sidewalk, whether or not we might be able to move those things up and they would be able to have some savings there that could shift over. However, from what I see in the email that was sent, perhaps it was thought that that was more significant than it turns out that list to be. The email that we received didn't really have a dollar amount associated, just a list of the hazard areas that the school district was expending funds on. So, just wanted to add that to the other piece that was discussed.
I was, I was under the impression from the January meeting that there were ample, ample bus passes for students, they just weren't getting the passes. There's not, there is transportation available for these students or they're just not getting up in time to get to a bus stop.
I don't think so.
No.
No.
Wasn't it under the impression that the passes got used up right away?
Right away.
They're out, they run out, yes.
Yeah, they end up having a shortage, the ones that we provide.
What do you guys typically spend per year on the bus passes?
Uh, some twenty-three thousand?
It varies from year to year, but it's somewhere in the, it varies from like thirteen thousand to eighteen thousand.
Right. But some of those are, are not just bus passes with students getting to school. Some of those, we have to provide transportation for special education children to get to certain places. We have to provide work to, to school or if a student is taking a class at a different school. So, this isn't just kids getting to and back from school. Some of that money goes towards, I would say the majority of that money, right, goes towards those special situations that we have to provide.
But if we had free bus passes for kids, that would be covered under the umbrella concept of it for everything?
And not all of them because these aren't just one bus, I mean, we have transportation picking up a certain student, one student at school and taking them and transferring them to another school or to UWO or to work or, you know, special situations that we have to do. So, that's outside of just a bus pass at a bus stop getting to and back from school.
But as Oshkosh Public School students, they'd be covered?
Right, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, you guys have approximately fifteen to eighteen thousand covered every year?
Yes, and so that fifteen thousand that was brought up is on top of that. And that's where he got the seventy thousand.
But you guys usually spend fifteen to eighteen every year?
Yeah.
And that would be out of that seventy thousand that we're looking at?
Yeah.
So, that could be put in every year as your guys' portion?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we currently do that, yeah.
And just let's, let's make sure that we're using the right terms. They aren't free bus passes. They're subsidized bus passes. There's nothing free in life.
Right.
You know, and don't take, and don't anybody take this the wrong way, that I'm not for this, but let's be open and honest and be truthful about what we're talking about here. We're talking about additional spending.
They're free to the student.
And we have to somehow fund it.
Is the working plan of this group so to provide subsidized busing to any student who wants it or just needs, the students that need it?
The discussion from, from what I gather is that, what I initiated in January was, let's build a way to make it so that all kids ride the bus for you in Oshkosh.
Okay, so it'd be like UWO's agreement and Fox Valley Transit.
Or Appleton.
So, Bob, are you talking just to school and back or are you talking like twenty-four stuff, like anytime, anywhere they want?
Within the operational systems of the Oshkosh of Go Transit.
They can use it anytime they want.
Social card?
Yeah, you've got an ID, you can get on.
So, do we have a plan in terms of next steps? Are our meetings set up and we know where, what are we going to do next with it?
It doesn't have to be transportation to, to a school function per se, it could be transportation, a bus pass to go to a movie, for example.
Correct.
Or work.
Or work.
Well, I, I mean, you know, at some point, you, you have to, it's, you know, going to a movie is one thing, going to work, even going to work is a little different thing. Are we talking about getting students to school? Or are we talking about getting them trans, are we talking about getting transportation to school? Or are we talking about getting them transportation?
The ESTER, the ESTER study that was done was about transportation to and from school and the discussion expanded beyond that.
But it also was the students within two miles of the school because otherwise they're covered by the district.
Colbusin.
So, it's really a short radius that this ESTER study was looking at. It wasn't looking at any student in the district getting free public transportation. It was really a need of those students within two miles because of either they couldn't walk on their own, maybe weather-related, parents' work schedules, all these things left that student at home for one reason or another. So, it was a gap of those students that are, don't qualify for public transportation.
That's what my understanding was.
Yeah, that's, that's really, and I think if we're going to solve that issue, that, that's a fairly easier issue, but if we're just going to look at providing public transportations, they can go up to Simla Theater at seven o'clock at night, show their ID. I don't think we should do that.
They would be able to do that because public transportation-
Well, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yes, you're right. So, they could go to the mall or something. I mean, I'm sensing, I'm sensing some mission creep here.
If it would be that way, it'd be modeled on what UWO has, they give free transportation to their students.
And alumni.
And, and staff.
And faculty.
Anytime you want.
It's not free, they pay for it.
They do.
These kids don't pay for tuition.
Subsidized, but if that's the model that we're working on, then that's, they show their ID card and they get on the bus and they ride.
These, these revenue models are, are being used by other communities. In every case that I'm aware of, the school district funds it and the idea behind it is that they can use it so we aren't distinguishing, questioning the child, are you on your way to school or on your way to Boys and Girls Club or the grocery store? That really doesn't matter, but, but Jim, for the most part, these, these agreements, similar to what we already have with the Fox Valley Technical College and UW-Oshkosh, is there's, it's a formula that's based on it and it gets adjusted based on usage and there's usually a cap and there's usually a floor so that the, the city gets enough revenue, but the school district or whoever the entity is doesn't get charged too much either. There's, there is some efficiencies of having people on the bus, which is a good thing, but Jim, generally, there's a, there's a formula that's built in, isn't that correct?
Yeah, that's how, that's how like our agreement with, with UWO has is a floor and a ceiling, so, and we generally, we're pretty accurate whether we end up kind of in the middle, but we've had experience with that for a number of years, whereas this would be something new. I mean, if some type of agreement was worked out, we would probably do it on, you know, a one-year trial because there is the risk that if we do something like this, that ridership goes way up and we don't have enough capacity anymore. You know, our buses are completely full at the end of the day at Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West High Schools. So, if we create a lot of new ridership, that's going to be a problem because we're going to run out of capacity. So, i- if we were to do a revenue agreement, we'd have to do it a short term and then evaluate it, you know, to, to see how it's working. That's what most of, Appleton's had theirs for a few years. Their's a little different because the school district actually funds a couple routes that they wanted Valley Transit to run, so they fund those a hundred percent. And then they also fund a couple of different, while they, they fund those couple routes a hundred percent, then they have revenue agreement where some of their students, their students can ride. That, that agreement was on a trial basis, they're still on the trial basis, it probably is going to be reevaluated. The other newer revenue agreements like Green Bay- The other newer revenue agreements, like Green Bay, is in its infancy, it's revenue-neutral to the transit system, the school board came, or the school district agreed, made a revenue agreement similar to like we talked about, like we have UWO and Fox Valley Tech, which was revenue-neutral to the city. And that's in its infancy too, I think that, that just started, you know, a few months ago. So, you know, as you're probably aware, a couple of other districts have been talking about it, but it's a pretty new concept to the public schools in Wisconsin. So, that's kind of where they're at.
Might I suggest, because I hear from members of the council on the issue, and the issue of a creep on this, that this potential, that this is growing beyond what really the original question from the ESTER group was. What if, and I, I believe Dave could identify, we could identify on an annual basis the specific students in each of those presently not covered transportation areas, and we simply bought passes annually for those students and they possessed them, and they were the only ones who possessed them, and we simply bought and paid for, for those identified students. Because if we did it that way, then we have a specific cost, and yes, we're responding then back to ESTER on those students who otherwise haven't, have difficulty in getting to school. If we bought and issued passes for only those students in those identified areas, very southern part of, of the city of Ashkosh on the edge, just remember, everything outside of Ashkosh is already transported, and those on, on, on North Jackson and that area that have no sidewalks, they're already transported. And we simply identified those who reside in sidewalked areas qualifying that exceed two miles, and simply issued and bought passes, not distributing any other way than an annual pass that could be recognized by bus drivers driving in those areas as qualifying, qualifiers for transportation. That would be a quantification, I gather, that should respond to the questions and concerns raised by ESTER, and it would simply resolve in that as a student registered, we'd have a tickler that that address is a qualifying address for transportation, and issuing a, a pass bought by the district from Go Transit. And, and that would be in their possession, not on a daily basis, but on a hundred and seventy-day round trip or a hundred and eighty-day round trip basis. And it would be good for that purpose, and it would be specific to the original question about students being involved, because all of the rest of the discussion has grown to be larger than a transportation problem that was not being raised by ESTER.
Related to transportation problem related to education?
Right, yeah, because if, if we just dealt with the geographic boundaries of those who do not qualify for school and, uh, transfer, transportation provided by COBUSIN in, in our zone, and identified on our specific maps what addresses we would buy if children live in those addresses, what addresses qualify for a bus pass? And we bought them for the year as long as they live there, that would be the qualifying event, and there would not be the question of how do we handle all these other transportation questions that were never raised by ESTER.
Well, I, I guess I can't speak entirely for ESTER, but I have been to several, several forums and several presentations, and I know that, at least at the Legal Women Voters Presentation Forum, that was some concern and question that came about in the conversation was about equity and about everyone having access for multiple reasons, one of which was the teaching young people hailed, we want them to be independent and we want them to be self-starters, and so that was part of that kind of educational component, was how you get from point A to point B, the place you need to be. So, that's kind of where some of that creep started, was what about the Boys and Girls Club, and what about the jobs, and the apprenticeships, and these other things, so that's kind of where that came out of.
I, I would suggest, though, that it wouldn't take away from the district providing because of the uniqueness of specials, specific transportation, that, that investment already has been covered, and that would continue as needed. But if we're going to deal with identifying geographic areas, equity comes because all other students have one ride to school and one ride home every day available to them by way of COBUSIN bus. In this case, the district would be buying and securing in geographic areas specifically with students in attendance who live in those attendance areas, one transportation, two from school, two and from school every day, that's good for a trip home from whichever school they attend to their home area. And, and on the opposite side, would work for, it, it is equity on the utmost, because it simply picks up those, because of state law and our transportation system that we comply with, with the state, it, it provides the same two trips to, one round trip, two, two and back and forth to school. Anything else goes beyond what I thought ESTER was asking for. Because if we're talking about educational efforts and we need to buy transportation for every child, then we're into a different thing, because we're also then duplicating our efforts, and to what extent do we reduce how many buses we buy from COBUSIN, because we suddenly have an alternative transportation system that we're paying for twice?
And, and we have to address K through five, because we're not putting kindergarteners on public buses.
Right, yeah, yeah, and, and those, but, but in this case, for the question that, as, as I read and I've heard virtually all of the presentations from ESTER, they were talking about equity, and they were talking about the opportunity to have these students qualify for equal opportunity in a ride to school and a ride home. And because of the distance and the uniqueness of the state law, that these individuals were be put, being put in a position that they have to pay for their transportation when all the rest of our students who we bus don't pay additional thing, are, we all pay for it through taxes. And, and to me, that's the most logical solution, unless we intend to change the whole philosophy of busing. And I think anything that we expand beyond that, we're suddenly duplicating our transportation system, because individuals might choose because of friends, I want to ride this rather than ride the COBUSIN bus, and pretty soon we're going to have under, under capacity of, and eliminate a few COBUSIN routes, but we're paying whatever, two dollars a day or whatever the price is for a whole group of students that we didn't intend to pay for, because we're already contracted with COBUSIN.
I do have one question regarding revenue and costs. Like, I consider revenue, we're going to, you know, it's going to cost us upwards of fifty to seventy thousand dollars. That's a revenue that, that we are possibly asking for or need to potentially cover, but what's our actual true cost to that? The buses are going to run. They're going to go to every stop, no matter who's on them or not, whether they're empty or full, they're running. So, what's our true cost to adding another student, adding another five students to each individual bus, to bottom line at the end of the year?
It comes down, we're funded by net cost, and so if we lose, if we lose that, that revenue, that increases our net cost, and that's, so it's, that lost revenue is, is just like extra costs.
Yeah, our, our fares only cover about twenty percent of our budget, and it's, and we're funded on operating deficit, so it's our revenues minus our expenses, and then after that, the feds and the state combined fund about, it's currently a little under fifty-five percent, it goes down a little bit every year, and then the local makes up, you know, our local levy makes up, you know, probably twenty percent, twenty, twenty-five percent, and then fares cover about twenty percent. So, that revenue that we get really is only about twenty percent of our costs, but if you take, you know, and the school district, like they said, is currently paying, you know, between thirteen and eighteen, nineteen thousand a year to buy buses, to buy passes for students that need it. And then we, a couple of years ago, we ran the numbers and we figured it was about fifty thousand dollars a year in, what people, you know, parents or families purchase for transportation for students. So, if you reduce that revenue, what that does is basically, it means that the local levy will have to come up with that, you know, because the school district, well, first of all, the school district will probably continue as on, but say the difference is fifty thousand, well, somebody's got to come up with that fifty thousand in revenue, because we're on, we're funded on our operating deficit. So, without that revenue, it just makes our, our whole financials look worse, and what's going to happen then is if we don't have that and the school district doesn't fund it, then the local tax levy's going to have to fund it.
I had a question, has there been any studies or community discussion about how many people want this as parents, as students? Because I mean, maybe it's something that the parents could invest in, like, I mean, how many students do we have in the Ashkosh School District?
We have ten thousand students. We transport right now about three thousand of, of our students, one-third, because we transport those few, or such a small number because of the location of all of our elementary schools, which become very close walking zones. And, so, but we then transport about, probably up to a thousand more, or more than a thousand more of special ed transportation as well. So, if we add together four thousand, so there are about six thousand students that walk to school, or maybe in that category. Dave, would you happen to know how many students we have in those population zones that are excluded right now for transportation?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's in the denser, if I recall the map, it was in the denser populated sections of the central city, I believe.
Well, if it's in the center, well, if it's, most of our central city is pretty close to one, high school is, is two miles, but there is, there is a, a part of, the very, there's a crescent shape on the most southern part of the school district.
Because I just had a.
But, but I, I think that would identify that, but I don't think any survey has been done, and I don't think ESTER has done either, to identify. It, it has been really comments by social workers and principals and, and the issue that may relate to students not coming to school. And, and just remember the data we shared last time, that our, our truancy and attendance is better than Appleton with a hundred percent of their transportation.
Well, actually, ESTER did do a survey, but that, wasn't that like seven hundred? Was that, what do you recall, the response? It was beyond the social workers, but it was primarily students. In response to what you're saying, though, I don't know whether or not parents were involved in that.
And do we know that those students were already, were included, students that are being transported by COBUSIN bus, but they don't necessarily like it? I mean, because that, I would assume, if they're seven hundred, I would assume that that includes those that are already in transportation zones.
My point was, I mean, if we have a fifty thousand dollar shortfall, where the school would pick up about fifteen thousand of the sixty-five or seventy, what would stop us from at the end of the school year, sending out a mailer saying, you guys want to participate in free bus rides for kids or whatever? Nothing's free, but they would pay a twenty dollars per student, and if you had five thousands, you know, students might, that would be a large portion of that.
Sounds, sounds a little bit kind of like a free or reduced school lunch that you'd be paying for, not the real cost, but, but a reduced cost.
Because I mean, it's, Jim said that it would be fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, if we have.
That's at full fare.
Full fare. I mean, if you get parents to participate in the program, they would be picking up part of it.
Yeah, and I, and I think that discomfort is the reality, that I think those who are most in need would still need to have a hundred percent, because if, if we look at a, even a dollar per round trip, for many of our families, a hundred and eighty times, times two is more than they can afford.
Bob, what does your committee feel that their mission is, to solve the ESTER's complaints, or give free busing to every student that wants it?
What was the part of your, what you said?
What would your committee think your mission is?
I, I really felt that the committee was really, at the end of the meeting, was really interested in providing bus passes or free bus transit to all Ashkosh students. And not, not, not just Ashkosh area school district students, but all students in Ashkosh. So, I mean, so, yeah, we're focusing from a school district sense, but it was the all-encompassing, all Ashkosh students.
When you say all Ashkosh students, you're also talking parochial schools and that?
You know, well, I mean.
Yeah, all of them.
So, then there's some serious mission creep here.
Absolutely.
They changed, yeah, it happens.
And the question is, and, and again, not to be the, not to be the, the wet blanket, but, you know, Counselor Cummings and I were talking, I mean, I remember when I was in grade school and middle school, I remember actually picking up, his, his wife rode with my sister and I. And where is the, you know, and again, not being, trying to be the hard guy, but where are, where is the bat coming forward of the community working together to address this issue first, is getting together and saying, hey, I know that you, Barb, I know you need a ride, you know, and I'm your friend, hey, you want to ride to school with us? You know?
Well, not his Uber service.
The clarity of that is, is, except for siblings, the age of transportation, you, you can't be using other teenagers to haul other teenagers.
You know, but there's, there's other ways to get to school too. You know, I mean, we rode our bikes and walked.
Walked, gee whiz.
You know, novel concepts, you know?
I think school districts have changed a lot, even from when I was a kid, I'm not going to go as far back as when you were a kid.
Watch it, you.
Uphill both ways.
You know, I'm looking at it from the perspective that there's, that there's a lot of kids that don't actually go to school in their actual school district anymore. There's so many kids that go to school across town that are, you know, because they, they request out of boundary, request to go.
That's their choice.
But this makes it easier.
That's open enrollment, that's their responsibility.
And, and they have to force parents. So, parents live in two different school zones, and so when you're at dad's house on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and at mom's house on Mondays, Tuesdays and Fridays, some days you can't, you know, you can get on the bus, and some days you can't. So, it's not simple, it's complicated, and I think that the mission is how do we become a community that is welcoming and progressive, so that we can attract and retain families to come here?
And part of that is also having a, a community that's affordable.
Absolutely.
And maintaining your, you know, and, and, you know, there's, there's everything that's involved in this.
Yep.
And it's a balloon, and when you squeeze it here, it comes out over here. And I mean, I totally agree with what you're saying about making a community attractive and that people want to come here, and.
My concern, my, these are, these are all good ideas, and we want, we want the kids come first, this group has an idea, that group has an idea, they never come with an idea how to fund it. They leave it in your lap, our lap, how do we fund all this stuff?
Well, it was suggested.
We brought up a couple ideas.
Because I think the point is, though, is that, is, I'm hearing solutions, but the problem has not, the, the true problem has not been identified. Is we need to address the, the, what is the problem? Students who can't get to school. That was where this all started, and it morphed.
I think the ESTER problem is pretty easy to solve with what Stan said.
Yeah.
I think the, this commission, you want to call it, or a committee?
Working.
Working group is working on a, a grand plan, that you're also going to have to now bring in Ashkosh Christian and awards, and all those people at the table.
Well, I, I mean, Tom, I want to agree with you, it's, it's a broader question, it's a, it's a broader communication that needs to take place. I completely, completely agree with that. Do I think, I think that there's ways that we can kind of fill the gaps to kind of continue that discussion, but still address the needs.
But to go back to Jim's point and Stan's point, I think we can solve the ESTER issue pretty easily, and continue the dialogue on.
The others.
The others. And if somehow, some way, there could be a way to fund that, and every student that lives in Ashkosh, whether they're in the Ashkosh School District, or awards, or Valley Christian, that's a great, that's a great opportunity that we might be able to provide down the line. But in the short term, and to the point that was really, that brought all this started, I think, I think your, your point is, well, taken Stan, I think we can move forward with that.
And I would agree with that, I mean, it's.
We don't know the, the numbers, but we have a quantifiable number, and I'm sure it's not going to be greater than fifty thousand, and it's going, and, and, you know, whatever number of students, and we simply would assume if, is the acceptable price a dollar each way? Is that, is that presently what the transportation, that's what standard fees are?
That's the current cost.
That's current cost.
There's a chance it's going to go off.
So, if we, if we multiplied two dollars for every student. That's current cause. So if we, if we multiplied $2 for every student in those qualifying geographic areas, as far as I looked at and read what the original Esther request was, we would answer that question.
Yep.
Because, because every, every child otherwise is being transported by co-bus and has access to transportation. And every child who is just outside that limit, even with, with all the exceptions that the district covers with hazardous crossing and no sidewalks, those are already transported. And we just took the, the, the blocks or the, the city streets that are sidewalks, but they're excluded from our present transportation because of mileage or miles distance. We would identify every single child, and as a part of the registration process, when that address pops up, that student is issued a year-long or a year-long two-way pass.
And it gets to the point, it addresses the issue that started this whole discussion before it began to-
Meanwhile, I'd encourage the group that Bob's organized, as well as anybody who's interested, Go Transit is going through what's called a Transportation Development Plan that's due next year. And there, all these other ancillary issues are appropriate for discussion with the Transportation Development Plan. Because the other one that hasn't been, well, it was mentioned a little bit, transportation extracurriculars stops at 6:30. Why? Because that's when our buses stop. And Jim knows that that's a growing issue. People wanting to work second shift, whether that's students or parents, that's an issue. Money will solve all those problems, but we have to incorporate it into our Transportation Development Plan. So we say, look, here are the issues we want to address. How are we going to address them? And that might be the, that might be the channel that this group can go if we can run with what Stan's suggesting. It's wonderful, the wisdom that Stan has. It's just all that 45 years of education. Thank you for sharing it with us. We're going to miss you. But that wisdom, I think, rings very true. And I think then we can work on these other issues through the Transportation Development Plan.
I think all, excuse me, Barb.
I think we've kind of gone full circle here on this. And we're about 30 minutes into this conversation. It's a very important one. I don't know how much longer you want to continue the conversation, but it sounds like we've come back to the notion of focusing on the requests that had come through Esther. And so if that seems to be the summation at this point, perhaps we should identify who's going to actually work on that so that something gets done. And then the broader conversation, as Mark Wolof was suggesting, with, with Go Transit can expand beyond that. But could we at least focus on the Esther piece and converse that?
I think that, I think that Stan has identified the numbers, and so we just now need to figure out a way to fund it.
So who's going to do, I mean, who's going to work on that?
Well, let it, we, we need to come up with the N. We need to know the number of students who live in those attendance areas. That's the first issue. And it sounds like unless we negotiate a discount based on quantity, we're talking $2 per every N that we identify. And that's really the issue at hand. And, and I think that's something we could, we could do by looking at our enrollment data and update it regularly as registration enrollment changes, that those students who live in those qualifying areas would be identified through the registration process as qualifiers and be issued passes that would last as long as they are in that area. If they move into a standard attendance area, we have another policing area that they should be writing the co-bus and bus because they'll be added to a co-bus and lift. And frankly, the co-bus and pickup is closer than most city bus pickups across the district anyway. So why would you continue to use a city bus if you moved out of the area?
I think what I would suggest is, I think it sounds like Transportation Director for the school district figures out N, gets together with our Transportation Director, it generates the number, and then that is reported back to-
Both parties.
The two organizations here. And then, then we make this, then we move forward with finding the funding for it.
Sounds like we have some closure here. I would just add one caveat. I know that, Bob, you had shared that there was some talk about the district perhaps providing some funding by moving our portion of the school resource officers to Fund 80. I would just make sure you have the law in mind with that, because I was at a recent legal affairs meeting with the School Board Association, and they noted that if you move your SROs into that Fund 80, they have to be available for things beyond the school debt. So just be careful with that one, is all I'm suggesting. Make sure you're up on the law on that particular solution. Thank you.
Yeah, we're not familiar with that, but anything we can do with the SRO program, which, you know, really dovetails with, back to security. I mean, that's, you know, we, I think everybody agrees, we don't have enough SROs in our schools. And anything we could do to find a creative way to, to fund those. I know we're funding about 60%. The district's funding about 40%, give or take, right now.
And I would just add, too, that there was some discussion about both of these issues amongst one of the local neighborhood associations. And some of those residents were discussing an interesting value, and that was, you know, what is the school district spending on athletic equipment and resources and amenities and sports in comparison or contrast to security, transportation, education? And so some of that value, value system is maybe in a shift?
Between 1 and 2%.
Oh, we're, we're way down there.
We're, we're on the lowest, lowest of the low and-
But the booster clubs, the booster clubs are helping to subsidize those, correct? Maybe there's a security and transportation booster club. We all write $100, $50 if we have no more meetings?
It's my understanding that the athletic organizations, without them, people would walk from the school fast. That's why people like Kimberly and they're investing huge numbers into their schools to attract parents who want their kids to excel in athletics. So it's, it's a critical component to the financial stability of the school district.
Okay. Excuse me.
We'd love to get you that data because, and then compare it to our neighbors and people would, Mayor Cummings is exactly right, that we better hold on to what we have because that's what holds, for some students, holds them here.
Any final comments on this? I'm not really trying to cut off conversation, but we have been at this now more than half an hour. And I love closure. I think we've reached that point. So it sounds like the school district has some homework to do. And Mr. Peschall will get together with Jim and the city and look at that next step. All right. Thank you very much. We have one final agenda item tonight, and that is refugee outreach. I'm not sure who's taking the lead on that one. You know, Oshkosh is becoming increasingly diverse with more and more people moving here from different parts of the world.
I'm not sure who asked that.
I guess I can, I can, I can start this. A couple of things. We recently had a program called Unity in Community on Saturday the 5th. And it was, the goal was to bring the diverse population together at the, at the Leech. And it was a big success. The weather was incredibly great. Numbers were beyond our wildest expectations. And I think a lot of you were there. We'll be doing it again next year. We're going to push it back a little more into June. But I had one person come up today, probably from Oshkosh. Why are all these foreigners here? And I said, tell me, Jesus. It did what it was supposed to do. It brought a lot of people together. One of our steering committee members, I don't know the name, Mohammed, is from Iraq, and he works for Shell Oil. And during the event, he lives both here and in Iraq, so he goes back and forth. And during the event, he was filming myself and Chief Smith, or videotaping and with his friends back in Iraq saying, in America, here's the chief of police and the mayor, no weapons, they're just mingling with the crowds. He was just blown away. I mean, he wanted to make sure his fellow countrymen knew that's how we do business in this country. But anyway, it was, I think it was showing that the city is diverse, we're very welcoming to other, other cultures. And one thing I do want to point out, when we went, Christian Gossen, the district attorney and I went to Oshkosh North and talked to the communities class about this program. They were very insmell on the whole program. After I finished talking, a student from Africa came up to me and wanted to talk his, his living conditions, his family's rental living conditions. And there were two significant things. First of all, he felt comfortable talking to an elected official face to face. But all she expressed, you know, getting no response from landlords and that type of thing. And I think that is a big issue with the refugee population. They don't speak the language very well. There's other issues. And I'm hoping with our rental housing advisory board, which Deputy Mayor Pal Murray's on, and also member Ugaraw is on, will at least be able to address the living conditions of these people in the community. So that, I guess, from our standpoint, that's one of our, the outreach is we are doing. So that'll be quiet and let somebody else talk. But once we have a date for Unity in the Community, we'll let you know. But it was, we had legal women voters there to explain to people how to vote. Chief Smith was there, our fire department was there explaining, you know, there are career opportunities in these professions for young people. So we're going to look for more people to set up tables to talk about how to work within the community, different things, including the museum, explain the kind of the history of this city and its ethnicity, how it's changed from the 1850s to, you know, this century. So.
Just one other little thing on, on the outreach. I've sat on several of the consortiums that puts money out there in the Community Fair Literacy Council, some in the mothers. I think, I think it's important that the citizens of Oshkosh know that we do a lot with refugee resettlement in the Oshkosh area. Not only does it affect the school district, the school district budgets, it affects a lot of our social service agencies. And they're all working together on it. And the consortium, which has, I'm on it, representing the city, the United Way puts money towards it, and so does the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation for grants. And so I just think the key thing here is, is that we've become really good at working with refugees and working with them in our city, in our community, in our schools, that that's why World Relief has an office in Oshkosh and why they want to come here. Because of the job we all do, whether it's transportation, education, social services, all those types of things. So I think our outreach is excellent in the community. And a lot of you serve in those other boards and commissions. And I just think that that's the key piece. Because I think everybody, not everybody, but some people look at Oshkosh as kind of conservative and close knit community, which we are, but we're also very giving and caring. And we work very hard to work with these minorities when they come in. And whether it's the church groups that support them, or World Relief is supporting them, they do tax our social service systems, but we've done a good job with that. We continue to do that. And funding for that is coming up. The meeting's the 30th to award the grants. And it's over $100,000 in requests. So just an update.
If I can chime in on, on World Relief and the activities there. Beginning last year, we partnered with World Relief. And when they bring a, once a quarter, they'll bring all of their new refugees that they've settled into the community together. And we, we do a, we do a weekend of, of interaction with my police officers, meet with the refugees. We talk about law enforcement in the United States versus law enforcement in some of these other communities. We do bike rodeos with them. We, we, we share with them the differences in our, in our culture here in the United States with law enforcement in relation to what they're used to. And it breaks down barriers and it, because they, they're afraid of us. But when they recognize that the police officers here in Oshkosh are just people, it creates a bond that I think goes a long way with us. And they, they understand that our legal system here is far different than the legal systems that they, that they used to in many of the places that they come from. And we start creating relationships with them where in the community, they see us and they're, they're willing to talk with us. And that's really the goal of us here in Oshkosh with the police department, is, is really to, to have conversation with folks so that they, they, they feel comfortable enough to talk with us and to, and to share with us when they have concerns in the community.
Were you going to say something else, Barb?
Just another item. Once you get closure, I know how big you are on closure, Barb. So, and I'm just going to, one thing that I think we maybe could put on for another future agenda, and I'd certainly reach out to Vicki to orient her to issues in Wisconsin. But I think school districts statewide need to become aware of a challenge that we've had at the, at local, in cities and villages and towns that has an incredible impact on your finances. And that's the dark store legislation that failed to get adopted by the legislature this past session. And we all have a stake in that. Even though the district taxes on equalized value, equalized value is a function of assessed value. And there is an incredible property tax shift going on in the state. And it's getting shifted towards residential properties and away from business properties. And I think we need to reach out to all of our governmental colleagues to make, to make everybody aware and put some pressure on the legislature. There is a majority of the legislature that wants this law, and yet it can't get through. And that's just crazy. If a majority of the state legislature wants to do this, why is it getting held up by one or two people in leadership positions in Madison? So I'll get off my stump.
I'll get on the stump for just a quick second. We talked about this a few weeks ago. But, you know, to date, this, this whole dark store thing, the city of Oshkosh has had to refund to the, to Walgreens $304,000 because then when the court case that they felt they were over assessed. Appleton has done about $700,000 in refunds. So between two cities, that's a million dollars. There's a small community in UP, it's one of the, Iron Mountain, Iron Something, that Lowe's took them to court. The city lost, and the refund was such, they had to close their library now. So the, the impact, and we're part of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, we're taking the position that the, those that will suffer the most in the long run are students, because it will cut into education.
I wanted to double check with Sue. If Sue is correct, it'd be, when we made that refund, we have to settle up with all of our taxing jurisdictions. So you paid part of that bill, and then you end up retaxing it, but it ends up going back to residential owners. So that's, it does have an impact on, on school district finances and the, in the equity of the distribution of property taxes.
We're really not known to talk further about this, but I think we can certainly list it as a future agenda item. Is there, are there any other future agenda items for this group or anything to wind up on the refugee outreach before we move on here?
Excuse me, Dr. Hirsak. Representing the district on all refugee issues is Julie Conrad. And we suddenly switched gears so fast that Julie didn't have a chance to respond to the questions regarding school district involvement on, on persons with, and I'm going to say this right, Julie, persons with refugee backgrounds.
Students and families with refugee background. I just want to remind us that as we're, as we're talking about families and students, it's families and students first, and it's their, and it's their background that we, it's like students, it's their, it's their background, and it doesn't define them. And we talk quite often with families and students about that. But anyway, but no, a big thank you to our community because it really has been a community effort. This past school year, we did not receive, there was no federal grants. We have gotten funding in the past to help resettle into, induct students with refugee background into our school district. And we did not get funding this past year. So we have absorbed all of that into our school district, either through Title III or Transfer of Service for high need students. And so we've been able to do that on a, on a very tight budget. But it's because of all the community outreach, it's because of all the community partners that we've been able to do that. The other thing is, is that our staff in the Oshkosh Area School District is incredible. And we believe that all children, no matter their backgrounds, have, have a right to learn. And we have been very welcoming and inclusive with that. Also, we have done really huge family engagement. And Chief Smith alluded to this, but we've had family nights where we've done big meals. And we've had over 100 people attend those and in partnering with our local faith-based organizations to be able to do that. So your continued support, we can do that. And just know that there's 549 English learners in our, in the Oshkosh Area School District, and the majority of them are at the elementary level. And so that's going to continue on as we, as we have new families and new families have more children. So, so thank you for that. And I don't know if you have any questions about English learners or students with refugee background.
I would just ask, I mean, I know this may seem obvious, but when we talk about students and families with refugee backgrounds, when we use the word refugee, that can be very broad, or that can be very narrow.
Correct.
So just out of curiosity, how's the school district defining that? Is that sanctioned? Is that sanctioned refugee background? Is that, uh, someone, a refugee, an urban refugee from Chicago? I mean, you know, I don't wanna play dumb here, but how are we defining that?
Right, there is a very specific definition for refugee, and that's put out by the, the federal government. And so when students and families or people with refugee background come in, it's based on that definite, that's based on that definition.
The federal?
Yeah, that federal definition. Um, the other piece is that as soon as they, as soon as they arrive here, they, they're, they're through their flight, and so they're technically no longer refugees. That's why it's refugee background. The second piece is, is that we, we refer to our students like as newcomers, because they're, no matter whether it's secondary migration or this is their first, um, this is their first home in the United States, they're really newcomers. They're newcomers either to our country or our community. And so that's how we, that's how we work with our, with our students. But it's a very specific definition, and once, once a family or a person is done with that flight, they're technically no longer refugees.
All right, you do that. Anyone else to wrap up here tonight? We've got a good conversation, lots, lots of input. We've got the direction as far as the transportation, the busing issue with Esther has brought to the forefront. And a good conversation about the community reaching out to our newcomers, whoever they might be, and also a, a permanent conversation about security. So, thank everyone for coming and for participating, and we look forward to the next meeting. Do we set next meeting now, or do we do that some future time?
We'll have Diane and Cheryl work it out.
Sounds like a plan. All right, thank you so much for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you all, thanks so much.
All right, any of you guys would like a stretch break for a second? Not wander too far.
The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government.
We always incorporate a section of the meeting for board and administrative reports. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Merrill Middle School. I had the opportunity to attend a choral concert there this week. Very energetic students, um, very large number of sixth graders participating in, in the choral concert, so that was a lot of fun. And I also returned to Merrill Middle School yesterday to visit a classroom. I was invited to visit a sixth grade classroom led by Frau Renner. And Frau used to be a German teacher in the district, and now she's reinvented herself as a sixth grade teacher. And I was so impressed with the poetry unit that the students were using, incorporating technology where they had downloaded five different types of poems, and then they needed to present those to the whole group. And, uh, the articulation and the comprehension of those students, vocabulary choice was really outstanding, and the way they used technology was outstanding as well. So that was, uh, those were two of the highlights for me this week in the schools. And I also wanted to note that we have a, a new person sitting at the table tonight. And that letter that leaves, um, Dr. Vicki Cartwright, who will be joining the district as of July one as our new superintendent. As we've said before, with big shoes to fill. Those of, Mr. Stan Mack will be retiring at the end of June. So we welcome Vicki tonight, and, uh, this is the first time I ever remember having two superintendents incoming and outgoing at, at, at this table. So welcome, Dr. Cartwright, too. It's amazing.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Mack for his, uh, second superintendent report of the month.
Yes, and, um, I'm going to defer to, um, a group of young people who are in the audience who want the opportunity to, um, report to us on their, um, on the Empower Academy presentation, and not have them have to listen to, uh, the superintendent's report, but you're always welcome to stay afterwards to catch it, so. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to our leaders regarding the Empower.
Yeah, thank you for waiting patiently till we got to this point. My name is, uh, Mr. Heller, and, um, I just wanted to say personally, I'm really proud to be here tonight, um, not just because I'm surrounded by all these powerful minds, but because I'm under the watchful eyes of these guys and girls. Especially Anthony here. For those of you that don't know the story behind this mural, this is Oshkosh East High School. And, uh, this was an alternative program that was in our district. And, uh, it went away in two thousand nine. It was for juniors and seniors who just didn't click in the traditional system. And, like, I'm sitting here listening to everybody talk, and, like, the whole time I was thinking about, what are these guys up to today? And then I think about, uh, what they'd be up to if they didn't have a program. Um, so, uh, Oshkosh East, that's just a real quick little gift to the district. It was a going-away gift in two thousand nine, and I'm so proud that it's still here.
Me too, Mr. Heller.
Um, so, um, when it left, there was a void, kind of in our district. And in two thousand eleven, a group of teachers started to get together to kinda, like, plan out, like, what can we do at Oshkosh West to fill that void? It took a few years, and we were focusing on the junior and senior that, um, was identified. And we were trying to come up with this idea for several years. And then, uh, when Mr. Peterson was hired on, the thought came out, well, why be reactive with the juniors and seniors that, um, have fallen behind? Like, why not try to identify some students a little bit sooner and be proactive? And, like, target freshmen coming right into our program? And, uh, we've been around for two years, and what I wanna do now is kinda hand things off to Sergeant Major Miller over there, who's going to, uh, talk a little bit about what we've evolved into over the last two years.
All right, um, so what we were trying to do is things different. So what does different mean? Different's a lot of different things to every group. So what we do is, one, uh, the teachers in our group, we act like somewhat like a core team, if you're familiar with how that works. We have a spe, uh, we have a, a specialized teacher, that's Aaron Hermit. Uh, we have, um, a team, we, we team teach. I teach with a math teacher. I, I've never learned algebra as best as I have now. Then on the, the other half of our program, we have a team of English paired with social studies to do on that end. We, so we team, that's a difference. We have a flexible block scheduling that is off from the other students. So we, um, have not a period, we don't go off the bell schedule. We have like a period and a half, but it's flexible. And some days it's a fifty-fifty split, some days I take all of it. And some days it is kind of, it just goes with the flow. So we do things different that way. The students are chosen based on background, and, um, Mr. Ryan Peterson can speak to how those students are selected. And then it comes down to how we do business. We were given essentially a blank check in how we do things. We have taken a very project-centered approach this year, small group, larger group. And we have done some things with, involving the, um, the community, with our escape room nights, with our passion project nights, that we have had. We've never done that in the past, and who knows where we can go in the future. But I could speak to on blue face about the good things that we do. I don't think it does it justice. So what we need to do is we have to have the students who are actually impacted by this program speak on behalf of the program, because they're the ones that benefit from this one each and every day.
All right, uh, hi, my name is Dominic Mueller. I'm the president of the Empower Advisory Team.
Hi, I'm John Tetzloff. I'm the vice president of the Empower Advisory Team.
Hi, and I guess I am the secretary and treasurer.
Hi, my name's Tristan Heck, and I'm the event planner.
Um, so who we are. The Empower Academy is, um, more of a project-based learning, um, system where it is a, where it is, where it is more of a melting pot of freshmen and sophomores. And we basically, um, our main goal is to empower the students to do their best, not only in education, but as, uh, human beings as well.
All right, how we're different. We've always had project-based learning presented to authentic audiences about the individual and collaborative work. And some of our projects include?
Uh, these escape room projects, um, it involved, uh, teams of four or five, where we got a room and we had to set up different themed puzzles. And it took the entire month of September, I believe. Uh, and instead of focusing on, I mean, there was a mix of academics or studies math. But the main focus of September was to get to know each other, build team, team building and community building.
Thanks. Okay, one of the things I said, well, how do we put all this together? Well, how loud for the promo damage? It was beautifully done. At the beginning of that one, all the camera angles were about six inches to a foot higher, and I was looking for that stuff.
Uh, you do that, you erase, you do this, say like this, okay? And maybe cut it to this square, it's an exact square, so.
So what you saw there was just a snapshot of one day in the course of that escape room project. So you can see there's a lot of different activity going on.
Uh, so our next project was more of a social studies project than anything else. Uh, it was a single-person project where we had to make a travel website for a country other than the United States. Um, and it was about a three-week process of researching and putting together a website through, I believe it was, I think it was Google, what, Google Websites, right?
Yeah, Google Sites.
Yeah, Google Sites. And, uh, in the end, actually, we got to, uh, look at each other's, and it actually got put in, uh, the school newsletter as well, uh, so people could go and look at everything. It would explain, like, uh, the culture, it would explain, like, places you would wanna go and visit. So like, uh, if you're going to, if you're going to France, we'll check up the Eiffel Tower, and so on and so forth. Um, and it was really more of like, um, like, learn more about, like, the different cultures and the society of all these other places.
All right, so this project was for children's book project. We had to create a book from scratch about a history topic, but make it a kid-friendly book. And we had to draw pictures completely from our minds and, um, create a whole story by ourselves with our own text and everything. And they were even published online to buy, and here are just some of the students that turned theirs in on time and got their book published.
This is actually Mr. Heller's. Uh, Mr. Heller and I actually did them as examples for the students ahead of time, but his artwork is far better than mine, so.
Far better.
Not so. So one of the benefits of being an Empower student this year is that you have to become a publisher.
Uh, one of the more recent ones that we did was the trebuchet project. And that was kinda taking all of the subjects and mashing them into one huge project that we did. Basically what a trebuchet is, if you don't know, um, it's kind of like a catapult almost. It has a, you know, projectile on one end and a weight on the other. And the weight goes down, brings the projectile up, shoots at a castle, and brings it down. So, uh, this video is about, um, the, the trebuchet night, which we had. It was open to the public, people could come in and see. And what we did is, we had, uh, the two sessions, the, the math, science, and the English and social studies versus each other, and see who would be the best.
Do you wanna mention anything about the targets that they're shooting at in the video?
Oh, yes, the, the targets were, um, the social studies and English side of it, where we made targets about, um, conflict in Africa. And so we would put these, sorry, not Africa, not Middle East. And so we had these targets which had, like, the different conflicts in Middle East or Africa. And it's...
So I don't know if you caught what happened there in that last shot, but John had his so dialed in that we actually put a piece of paper on the floor across the gym, and he was able to drop this target on the, or right on the piece of paper.
All right, so our most, uh, recent project actually was last night, was our showcase for it, and that was the passion project. And, um, pretty much everybody has a passion, whether that is sports, whether it's music, whether it's animals, or it can be something on the complete other side of the spectrum. Um, and we, uh, we as an Empower, as the Empower Advisory Team and them as teachers, they pretty much pushed us all to find our passion, and if we haven't found it yet, find it. So what we did is, for about a month, in our fourth hour, which we call Empower Hour, which is basically a built-in study hall that we have into our system, what we did is, we worked on these passion projects and did basically what we wanted to do with it. So, uh, some of the pictures, top left, that's Kevin, and he's really into welding. So his dad, uh, works for a company and was able to bring a welding simulator in, which was really neat. And there were a bunch of other things. Uh, there's me at the bottom with guitars, I'm a musician. Mr. Miller on the right with his outdoor adventure club. On the top right is Cory with her dogs. Top, or the bottom left is Mr. Heller with all of his stocks. And at the top is, uh, and on the top is Shelby, and I don't remember what Shelby's passion was.
BMX.
BMX, BMX, literally BMX, all right. Yeah, so that was our most recent project. Uh, and, uh, some of our students even made the honor roll. Uh, starting from the left, that's Tammy, Billy, uh, John, Tyler, and then myself. Yeah. So, uh, just gonna introduce myself again. My name's Dominic Mueller, I'm the president. A little bit about me, uh, as I said before, I'm a musician. I play, I counted last night, I played eight different instruments. Uh, maybe not all of them very well, but I play eight instruments. Uh, my position, uh, I'm the president, so I mainly do a lot of the talking, whether that's to other people, field trips, I talk to the places that we wanna go. Really, I, I, I don't wanna say I do a lot, but I do enough. Yeah, so my best memory is probably the escape room project. The escape room project, we were all just thrown in, we didn't know anybody. None of the freshmen barely knew each other, just the ones from the middle schools. And nobody, like none of the freshmen knew any of the sophomores, it was complete chaos. But we were thrown in to do the staff's escape rooms right away and it was really hard. And what it was, we basically made these friendships within the first day of the program of school. And it was really eye-opening to be like, wow. And then it only escalated from there, more friendships to the point where I feel as everybody in the program is just one big family. That's how we all treat ourselves and that's exactly why I love the Empower program so much. I've never felt with school that I've had this many people behind my back. Our program has roughly forty people and I can safely say that's forty people that I know have my back whenever I need it. And it's, it's a giant family, that's really all it is and that's probably my favorite part of the Empower program.
Like I said earlier, I'm John Tetsloff, I'm the vice president. Yeah, I can't really beat the family talk, but I mean, Empower is just an amazing community of people. Even the teachers, their friends, family, almost, you know. We call it whatever we want, but just great people to be with. Things like EEP, the Empower Advisory Team, it's, it's really neat to see because like in the, I don't know about normal like student by the presidents, but with EEP, it's the bridge between, the, the bridge of communication between the teachers and the students. And it works, it really does. It's nice to have. And with EEP, we plan these really cool trips. The, there's one that we're going on June first, it's to Mount Olympus, very excited for that one. One that we did around December, we went tubing at, what was that?
Nordic mountain.
Yeah, Nordic mountain. We had tons of fun there, at West. Kind of what Dom said with the puzzle, puzzle rooms, escape room projects, they're, they're engaging, you know? They, they bring in the crowd, which is fun, you know? They are, they really are. Also, the, the best, most important part is the better grades, of course. You know, going to middle school and high school, I was pretty scared, but with Empower, it's just a big relief.
All right, again, I'm Megan Stang, secretary treasurer. When I first heard I was going to be Empower, I thought I was going to be put in a class of like stupid people, like to be completely honest with you. But I talked to my middle school counselor and some other high people at West and I talked to them about, like more about what the program was about. And at first I was like, I'll try it, but I'm like probably not going to do it. But then like I realized like being a weekend student is like so much more than that. Especially because like I'm a sophomore, so like Dom won't know about like the first year of Empower, but it's, it's different from this year, but I feel like both of them just definitely helped me so much. And the teachers, when they come over to help you, you have like a question for them, they like know your learning style, so they can like transition from the last kid they were helping to you to help you better understand what you're confused about or something like that. And I think the big part of it is the community you're around with the students and how they impact your learning in there, which is a really like good thing about it because everyone's just super nice and everything. And then the teachers are also a big part about it. And the project opportunities are a very, very, very good part about them because you're not just sitting down in a chair and a table with a paper in front of you, just writing down. We get the on-hand learning opportunities and the favorite one of mine was definitely escape room because like they both said, you were thrown into a group with kids that you just met and you had to make an entire room with them. And so I liked having the opportunity to get to learn how other peoples are with groups and individually. And I thought it was just a really nice time to get to know them and I made a lot of friendships this year.
Hi, my name is Tristan Egg again and I'm the Empower event planner. When I first came into Empower, I wasn't really sure at first, like Megan and I tell us, for stupid people. But then I realized that you get extra help and, yeah. For me being, well, I like to be involved in the leadership team because I help find field trips and other events. I also get to be part of the group. And my favorite memory is the lip sync battle that we had with the, this is the December.
Christmas party.
Yeah.
Why was it your favorite memory?
I swear it slides to get you off the road or something.
And then fortunately Kaylee could not be here tonight, but she is a social media advisor and this is just what she has to say about it. I've been Empower since the beginning, the two years it's been running. I have never, I was ever a bad kid, I just like didn't know how to get to learn and stuff, so. It was, she had a harder time getting all of her homework in and on time. When she first started she was in Empower, she thought it was going to be put in there because she was stupid. But she gave it a chance and it ended up helping her be very successful.
I actually want to say one more thing. You guys said that it was a class for stupid people and it's not. It's a class for kids who have potential, but don't know how to achieve that potential and use it for their, for their benefit.
Great. Also, I don't think, I don't think any of us had made the honor roll prior to Empower, right? And, yeah. Let's say none of us had gotten good grades prior to Empower. And now I think, I think most of us are like A, B, C students from going, I'm assuming C, D, maybe even F students. So that just kind of tells you the huge turnaround that it's had and about the teachers being flexible. They will bend over backwards, and I mean backwards, just to get the students to be able to do their work and for them to feel comfortable and like it is ama, it's amazing. So I just want to say a quick thank you to you guys for being. So on that note, do we have any questions? I'll go right away.
Okay, I was just going to ask how a student would find out about the program? Would the teacher tell them about it or?
I think that's something that teachers.
I think Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I could, I could talk a little bit about it. We have a selection process, at least in place. We typically look for kind of, I guess what I would say are some of our more reluctant learners or some of our disenfranchised learners. I reach out to all of the middle schools, I have a conversation with the principals at the middle schools as well as their dean of students and their guidance counselors. And we essentially ask for recommendations, they're going to know the kids best. We've laid it out pretty clearly over the last two years exactly what the program is, the philosophies behind the program and what we're trying to do for these students in regard to making high school more engaging, especially in the freshman and sophomore year. And the people in the middle schools are doing a phenomenal job of making really great recommendations. I was working with the list a little bit for next year today and I think right now we probably have about twenty-five or thirty kids that are on a waiting list to try and get in as well, so. You know, and, and we try to triangulate some of the recommendations that we get with some of the wise data from the state of Wisconsin as well. Just so that we're not just merely going on a narrative from the middle schools, but trying to take all of those data points into effect when we at least recommend it for students. How that process works then is a letter goes out to families, we invite them into a preview night where we explain the entirety of the program for them. And we give them the option, they can opt out if they don't want to be part of this. We have a lot of students that are really looking to, I think, do high school a little bit differently, who have had some struggles at the middle school level. And by no means do we want to force anyone's hand and make them come into our program because we do want it to be a family and we want students that want to be there and want to experience success for the first time in a long time, more than likely. So it's a, it's a pretty well-defined process now. Year one it was not and we made a lot of mistakes. And the funny part is the mistakes that we made, I think, in year one were based mostly on our narrative and the students that we brought into the program that we knew at the high school already, trying to give kids an extra shot that maybe didn't fit, I think, the criteria that we were looking for.
Thank you.
How many students are currently, or how many can you house? You said you had twenty-five to thirty on a waiting list, how many do you house?
Yeah, typically, I mean, our goal is somewhere between fifty and sixty students right now, that's our goal. You know, more often than not, this population's a little bit more transient. So we'll put out a lot of invitations to families. Some of those students end up at North High School based on a family move and that's where they just end up going to high school. Others leave our district based on other family dynamics as well and some just simply opt out in the first two years. So I think as we move forward, we're going to definitely be a lot closer to sixty for sure.
And this is housed, I would assume, at West?
Yes.
And I had a question for you guys. What made you or who made you think that this was a program for stupid kids or dumb kids?
That's a mom question. Don't you!
No, like what gave you that impression and how can we fix that? All of you, please, yes.
It's kind of the premise of being in a different class now with the general population where they're in the, the normal classes and we're in a completely different schedule and we're not in the conversation with the normal kids. Well, I shouldn't say normal.
But was, so was this in middle school when you came up or were, are you talking, but you were a freshman and then they were trying to pull you out? So do you think that this, 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 I don't know what it, like? No, I'm thinking of like the stigma that it's for, for dumb kids. Do you think that that's going to go away? Do you think that's going away? Because the program is getting old, getting, you know, it's in your second year and you're learning more and do you think that the communication is going out better for families or for students?
Yeah, I feel like just kids that are in it really don't know what it's about until we explain it to them. So they have this image in their mind of like the core of those stupid people. But because when I, I was in eighth grade, I got pulled out of class to go to talk to a counselor that wasn't even like our counselor, she was just a felon. So I don't think she knew what she was really talking about, which is why I got the wrong impression.
Okay.
Just because she goes up to a lot of like the counselor, because the counselor was out.
Okay.
So I certainly think she got like the right message of what it was about.
Okay.
Which is where I got my like first thoughts of like, oh, I don't want to be in this.
Right.
You really just need to know what Empower is about, which is why we like to put ourselves out there and talk about it a lot just to get it in other kids' minds that like, oh, like we get good grades, we do fun things and we can show theirs that our program is really fun and it's not what people are like talking about it as.
I think another thing that kind of adds on to that is when you first get your schedule on Open House, you expect to see the regular algebra, physical science.
Yeah.
But for that to be replaced with only a three-block sign that says Empower Academy and then on the bottom it says all your, all your core classes, it's kind of like, oh, what the heck is this? So I know when I first came to Open House, when I was the, when I was an incoming freshman, I went straight to Mr. Mandiak's room because that was the first, like that was the first place I saw. And, and me and my family were just like, what is this? Because none of us had a clue and he explained it and it was like a, oh, kind of thing. And it was kind of like that aha moment, like, all right, that makes sense. And then it's kind of like the whole family thing, like they kind of jump on your radar like, hey, you should be doing your homework, otherwise this won't happen to you. And it's like, and it's like, all right, that's kind of like, that's kind of where the whole stupid kid, like you're not doing your stuff kind of thing comes in. And now I'm just like, hey, I'd rather be in this than be in rather than regular classes. This is, this is by far like ten times better than this regular, regular old classes.
One thing that's a little different that makes us stand out is we're doing four core classes in three hours. So we actually have a different passing time than other students, at least for the first four hours of the day.
Okay.
So that does make us stand out when other kids are walking down the halls and they can see them, et cetera. The nice thing is, is that with communities and Global Academy and some of these other communities that they're doing, that's becoming a little more of a norm and so that's a nice thing for other kids to see. And one of the big changes I saw this year at the beginning of the year when we did the escape room is other students, we actually borrowed other students from like study hall to actually run through the kids' rooms to let them do a practice run. And as kids were coming through, just we pulled them out of study hall and they actually did the rooms for the students. They were asking about it, like what is this, why are you guys doing this? This is a project for school, I wish I was in that class. So that's been kind of a nice change.
So you think that that was just kind of because it was so new and people didn't understand it?
Yeah, literally this is your tube, so it's a, I think as it becomes more the norm, it won't be.
Right, and with global, like you said, global and community, it is becoming the norm. That's awesome.
Thanks, Jim.
So I understand that the program is, is hopefully going to be then expanded to juniors and seniors. Is that also true?
We've had conversations about how to create a, an extension of the program. I wouldn't say by any means this program at the junior and senior level. There are a lot of differences once you get to that upper level in high school in regard to just flexibility within courses and things like that. But we've had some significant conversations, our principal team at West along with a few others, about how we can maybe incorporate somewhat of a work, work component and maybe some blended courses as well at the junior and senior level to try and really, you know, give kids that may not have been in the Empower Academy even an opportunity when they get to that junior, senior level because there is still a lot of need there as well that we're not necessarily, I would say, addressing head-on with a particular program. So I would say there are, rumors are probably true, but it's in its infancy right now.
We, in our district, have always had more options for kids their junior and senior year after they've already become credit deficient. And the whole goal of this program is to prevent kids from being credit deficient. And that's one of the reasons why we do that integrated approach with the four core areas in a three-hour block is our goal is these kids are on track or, you know, even ahead of track to graduate credit-wise. So, you know, and they do outside of the Empower Academy, they do take, you know, regular classes, like their elective classes outside of the academy, so they have all the elective opportunities that, you know, all other students have as well, so.
I was just thinking about the family aspect and that would be nice if that could be demonstrated and tapped.
What's the core group of teachers? Like how many teachers are involved?
So yeah, Mr. Heller is English, myself is social studies. Mr. Miller is science. Mr. Hrum is our special education teacher. And Mr. Dresden, who isn't here, is our math teacher.
Okay.
What do you guys need from the school board? So that we can help you.
Well, I was going to actually compliment you guys and return the favor to Dom. Because the students here have actually fundraised all the money for all of our projects this year from scratch. So we actually have done the festival at Brock Barn at least twice a year. We've written letters and tried to do grants, et cetera. We've spent about, I would say, nineteen hundred dollars on student materials this year and we go to Walmart and get it as cheaply as possible. But these guys have actually helped us fundraise every dime, which is fantastic. So a huge thank you to you guys for what you do. And then just having said that, I know I've talked to Mrs. Garner before and we've actually looked at like different people in the community willing to donate and so if you have any of those names, numbers, et cetera, that are willing to donate PVC so we don't have to buy it. Any of those things are fantastic, so connections would be a huge thing.
I think the PVC, the trebuchet project is the main thing that really boosted the, boosted the whole amount paid that we had to pay throughout the year. Because the Empower program, it paid for all materials that were PVC included. So like, but like people like John who made his pretty much entirely out of wood, they didn't pay for any of them, they did strictly PVC. And buying all that PVC and like, we didn't have it there, we didn't have like a strict amount that you could, could use. We ordered it all. So people would, so all the kids would put what they needed and the teachers all went to, whether it was Fleet Farm, Menards, Walmart, you name it, to go and get these materials. And that really put a lot of, a lot of amount, amount in our budget. Put a big dent in the bank account.
We even have to give plasma to it.
You raised your hand, I want to hear what you said.
Oh, Mr. Mandiak said it beautifully.
I was just coming to say thank you again for coming and waiting an hour and a half. You guys are incredible. I loved hearing about this program and thank you so much for all you do. You guys are really fantastic.
We literally have a question from the floor.
I just wanna share that I, you can feel immediately, fully, this wonderful vibe, this community of love, this, it's palpable, it's beautiful. You guys are fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I just wanna, I just wanna say to the board too, if you want, if you wanna stay updated on, on what these guys are doing, Empower OWHS on all major social media things.
Empower.
Empower OWHS.
Look at them all write it down. That's beautiful, see? Look at that.
Check, Jackson.
Dr. Herzog, if I could. I just would like to, to, I think, draw to the board's attention as well, this particular group of students and, and these truly authentic learning experiences. It's very rare that we bring students to a joint board and council session, and they sit here and have this learning experience, and they soak all of that in. And just how impressed I am with this particular group. We've had the opportunity to take this on the road a little bit. Um, I was a former at-risk or alternative educator as well in Wisconsin, and I'm very well-connected in northeastern Wisconsin. And about two weeks ago, um, we brought this group with us to speak to a group of educators from the Green Bay School District all the way to Fond du Lac as well. And just to give John a shout-out, 'cause I like to showcase kids. He brought the room to their feet, and there was a standing ovation based on some of his commentary. Um, and it's quite impressive if you think about the group of kids that we're targeting from the middle schools, and then the authentic learning that is taking place at the high school level on all fronts, whether it's selling a, a bratwurst to someone walking into Festival Foods, or whether it's attending the board session tonight and being able to observe what's going on in regard to community government. And again, I, I owe, I owe all of the, the success of the program to the teachers, and I think watching the kids just buy into this particular model has been very, very impressive over the last two years as well. So, um, not to steal a last word, but I think we owe it all to this group as to what we're doing to kind of be proactive for some of our more disenfranchised learners in the community.
Thank you for sharing.
Yes.
Again, we are grateful to you for coming and sharing tonight. We're all about student learning, and you've certainly given us some things to think about moving forward as a board, as we look for ways to continue to improve what we do around this field. So thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you, Brad.
Moving on to the superintendent's good news report and calendar.
Thank you, staff and students, and thank you, our principals from West High School. The superintendent's good news report for, um, for Wednesday, May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. We have done the Empower Academy, and, uh, so we're all set? Okay, here. Four K students at Carl Trager Elementary School worked hard with their families to read one thousand books before kindergarten, sharing their success with, uh, success stories on a display throughout the year, and throughout this participation in, with, and celebrated the participation with an ice cream treat and story. Oakwood students have been very busy working to plant a garden through the Oshkosh, through Oshkosh and playing with recess and community students from Oshkosh North High School. Tipler and Alps students celebrated their hard work on the Wisconsin Forward Exam with an afternoon of music and deli bars. Great job. Congratulations to Oshkosh West High School for being recognized as a Level Three, Three Advanced Placement Pay Center School for impressive student and AP success, excellence on AP exams, and during the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Second chance students volunteered to, in a variety of ways throughout the school year. Some of those opportunities include playing bingo at Parkview, providing roadside cleanup, and preparing, preparing school gardens for the growing season. South Park Encompass students learned about the body awareness and control through a demonstration on fencing provided by the Historical Fencing Club of Appleton. Students enjoyed cheering on one of their staff members who suited up just for fun. South Park students, Encompass students also worked on team-building schools by, and, and trust in rock climbing at the YMCA. A lot of those students started the, the day unsure of themselves, but quickly made their way to the top and were impressed with their accomplishments. Congratulations to the Oshkosh North High School athletes and coaches who were nominated, and for those who received the Wisconsin School, um, High School Sports Awards Event on May third. Great job to those students. Thanks to the Oshkosh Area Women's Fund for sponsoring the Girls Go Forward Program for the five OSD middle schools. The program helps young women learn valuable life lessons about friendship, self-esteem, conflict resolution, and the importance of physical activity as it relates to healthy minds and healthy bodies. Fifteen students from South Park Middle School, shown here, are thankful for the opportunity to be involved with the Girls Go Forward activities. Communities students at Oshkosh North High Schools reflected on a school year of volunteer opportunities, including preparing Menominee Park for their annual Celebration of Lights event, working with St. Vincent's Food Pantry, and stocking and organizing shelves at Father Carr's. South Park Encompass students recently toured Oshkosh Truck and had the opportunity to test ride the JLTV and the MATV. Congratulations to the South Park students who received awards for their essay and the South Park and Downtown Rotary Esley, um, Community Essay Experience. Students received monetary awards and were treated to a luncheon along with the opportunity to, um, to read their essays. Congratulations to Dante and Michael, two Oshkosh West students who recently signed letters of intent to play football and baseball at the two colleges. Great work. Fifth grade students at Washington Elementary School have learned, have teamed up with their Oshkosh North Communities to, um, students to start a Helping Hand program will aid Washington families in obtaining necessary supplies during the times of need, which includes hygiene, products, clothing, and food. Students have been very busy collecting those and organizing those donations. Kindergarten students at Washington Elementary School have learned all about things that everyone can do to take care of the, on Earth Day. In Celebration of Earth Day, they did their part in cleaning up their school grounds. Franklin First Grade students worked hard on their creating, uh, creating their series books and developing characters and details in the books. They were excited and became famous around the schools for their end product. They received great comments on their work. Oshkosh North Pride and Link Crew interacted with Merrill eighth-grade students to help them learn about transition from eighth grade to high school, allowing time for questions and answers, answer session to help the necessary information for the Merrill students. And congratulations to Carl Trager Middle School students, who, student Savannah Swonky, who was recently won the WPS Name That Click contest with her name Han Sol, and was given to the new programs and Falcon chicks casting at the Pullman Plant. Her prize at class presentation provided, well, parag, peregrine falcon expert, as well as behind-the-scenes preparation for the Bay Beach Wildlife Center. Oshkosh High School students in their Fashion Interior Design course traveled to Shields and to learn about the behind-the-scenes work that's done to create displays and sell merchandise. And finally, congratulations to Smith and Jefferson Elementary Schools for recently receiving the Wisconsin School of Promise Awards in Madison with Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Evers. And listed here are activities of the superintendent that, and meetings that I've been a part of in the last, um, past few weeks, and that completes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beck. Moving on, do we have any district administrators supplemental reports tonight?
We, we do have a report on the follow-up, um, or you do see that on the agenda on previous, right?
The Listening Session Report from May ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Dumball.
We had one family come to our May ninth Listening Session, and they asked some great questions focused on how do we allocate staffing in the school district? How do we make staffing adjustments? Their primary focus was really around counseling and support staff. So fortunately, Matt Kemmer was there, and he was able to answer a lot of their questions. He actually was able to stay with them because the rest of us had to actually come to the board meeting, so it worked out quite well. So, I don't know if you have any questions, or just wanted to let you know that's what we discussed.
Is there a follow-up that needs to happen?
I don't think so. I told this particular parent that I'd be happy to meet with them anytime to discuss it further. I think we're gonna set up a time. I haven't heard back yet, but I'm hoping we will at some point.
Do they want something that is reasonable, or are they asking for some, something specific?
I think they're just seeking to understand. You know, when, when Project Key came to an end, we lost two counseling FTE, and that created some shifts. And we've been able to recoup those FTE in various ways, and that most recently has led to a shift at, at the counselor position at M. Line Cook, which was a primary concern for the counselor. So for the district, it's a good thing, because we had to make this shift because there's some counseling time that we were able to add. But ultimately, the counselor that was there will be full-time at Webster Stanley Elementary now.
So, that's Listening Session Report. Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports tonight? Is there anyone here tonight to speak to the non-agenda-related? Is there anyone who would like to speak to any agenda-related item tonight? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull anything from tonight's consent resolution agenda? All right, we will be pulling nine B, nine C, ten, twelve, and fourteen. So, the board will consider approval of number one, minutes of the April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen Board Reorganization Meeting, two minutes of the April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen Regular Board Meeting, number three, minutes of the April fif, twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen Executive Session at Regular Board Meeting, number four, minutes of May eighth, two thousand eighteen Special Board Meeting Executive Session, number five, minutes of May eighth, two thousand eighteen Special Board Meeting, number six, minutes of May ninth, two thousand eighteen Regular Board Meeting, number seven, minutes of May ninth, two thousand eighteen Executive Session at Regular Board Meeting, number eight, bills payable, number nine, personnel A, appointments, temporary appointment, resignations, and salary schedule, nine D, waiver of forty-five-day notice, nine E, resignation of administrator, number eleven, extended staff, excuse me, extended year staffing for current school year, and number thirteen, certification of high school graduates.
So I'm on second.
All right, please call the roll. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Hushel?
Aye.
Hushel, aye. Moshe Carey. Item number nine B. Personnel nine B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So move.
Second.
I just wanted to, once again, note that we have four individuals who have devoted a goodly part of their working years to the students and family of this school, families of this school district, and I just wanted to, um, wish them well in retirement as they begin this new phase of life. Kathy Hynen is retiring as a Spanish teacher from Oshkosh West High School, and she has served the district since nineteen eighty-nine. Lee Poklasny is retiring from Carl Trager Middle School as an Assistant Custodian Fireperson Two, and has served the district since nineteen ninety-seven. Paula Qualley is retiring as a cross-categorical Teacher Assistant from Oakwood Elementary School, where, and has been in the district since nineteen ninety-seven. And finally, Anne Rice. Rice has been a media specialist at Carl Trager Elementary and Middle School since nineteen eighty-eight, so a long time, and we wish them all a long retirement. Thank you. Please call the roll. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Hushel?
Aye.
Hushel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Moshe Carey. Thank you very much. Resolution of nine C. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the appointment and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
I'm on.
Second. This, this resolution, I thought, deserves some attention because we have two administrators who will be joining the administrative ranks of our school district beginning in the fall. Molly Demrow is going to be the new principal at Reed Elementary School, and Michelle Last is going to become a new Assistant Principal at Oshkosh North. I don't know if there's anyone from administration who wanted to comment on either of those appointments. This is not something we get to do every day. It's kind of special. Dr. Jones is coming forward.
Yes, thank you. After interviewing many, many candidates and having several rounds, including rounds with parents, staff members, and administration, and then the second round with the executive team, including Dr. Cartwright, we are very pleased to announce Molly, Molly Demrow. She's a fourth-year principal out of the Stevens Point Area School District as an elementary principal to take the place of Jackie Kiftmeyer at Reed. And Jackie was promoted to, or moved to, more appropriately, to the North High School Principalship. And then also, our, our second candidate for eighth is an AP position that was vacated by Karen Wires, and she is a employee over at Tipler Middle School. So, questions about any of those?
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Hushel?
Aye.
Hushel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Moshe Carey. Thank you. Resolution number ten, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the four K EC community collaborative site contracts as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So move.
Second. Wanted to give Mrs. Schindel an opportunity to give us a two-to-three sentence summary so that we can highlight this program, we serve some of our younger learners.
Did you have specific questions, or just in general where we're at? We're really excited to be staffed as fully as we have been the past several years. It's been really wonderful to make sure we're making connections between what we're doing at the early learning level and up through K-five and beyond. With the staffing that we have in place, we're able to do some really great work supporting social-emotional development as well as those early academics. And so we're hopeful, we're, we're actually currently going through transition meetings with all of the elementary schools and able to share information about the students that they'll be receiving, so that they're not starting over from the beginning where we receive them from, that they're actually able to just keep going and keep building on the skillsets and strategies and tools that we know help them be successful this year in Corey kindergarten, so.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Hushel?
Aye.
Hushel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Moshe Carey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schindel. Resolution twelve. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved curriculum materials adoption for K-eight science as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
I'm on.
Second. This, this is a special, well, we have a lot of special things going on. It's not off, it's... Evans, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Schendel. Resolution 12. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve curriculum materials adoption for K8 science as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So moved. Second. This is a special, well, we have a lot of special things going on. It's been a long time since K8 science has had an extensive adoption of new curriculum materials, and so I wanted our curriculum people to have an opportunity for a two-or-three sentence summary of what this involves, including a part-time position which will support this adoption, which is kind of unique.
Yep. So, K8 science, we have not done an official adoption in 10-plus years, and what is pushing this adoption is back in October of 2016, the board adopted the Next Generation Science Standards. And in addition to that, the state of Wisconsin adopted a version of the Next Generation Science Standards with Wisconsin connections back in November 2017. So, we're directly aligned with where the state is going and where we see learning, three dimensions of teaching and learning happening in the STEM area, in the science area specifically. So, this summer, we're going to be doing some extensive professional development to get our K5 teachers and our middle school teachers up and ready to go to be using Mystery Science in K5 and to be using Amplify Science in middle school. In K5 science, Mystery Science, it's really a teacher resource support, and Mystery Science does not have kits or put-together kits. And so, in order to support the science resources, the distribution, et cetera, we're proposing a half-time STEM science, like Office Tech or a program support person in order to help us organize the materials and everything that comes with hands-on learning, because a big part of our adoption is really making sure that we have students hands-on and minds-on, actively engaged in the classroom. And that takes stuff. It takes consumable resources. It takes equipment, et cetera. And since these are, the kits are not coming pre-put-together, we really need some help with putting together those resources. Thus why that half-time position is part of the adoption. The adoption is coming in significantly under cost. Normally, it's $120,000 per grade level is what we usually budget for an adoption, and this is coming in under budget at the K5 level and just a little bit under budget at the middle school level, so.
Any questions, comments? Nice job, ladies and gentlemen. Please call the room. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Hushel?
Aye.
Hushel, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And finally, resolution number 14. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approves the selection of Technology Resource Advisors, TRA, as the vendor for IT project number 1074, staff Chromebooks replacement as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Making me a little nervous there.
As a president, it isn't supposed to be a second, so. Anyway, again, we have an exciting resolution here with Dr. Dunlop, who's put in a lot of work, along with Mr. Sommers, on Chromebooks and technology. So, we wanted to give him a chance to just give us an executive overview here of what this is all about.
Sure. Kind of take you back a little bit to 2014 when we passed our first Learning Without Limits referendum. A big portion of that was, Phase 1 was giving staff the devices first. Well, those devices are now the first ones to get replaced because it's been about four years. The devices have held up well, but if you talk with our teachers, their batteries are getting a little bit, issues, and screens are starting to have issues, and the devices have been well-used. So, it's time for us to replace those. They're on schedule. They're going to be replaced. We're going to be doing the professional development with teachers on August 27th. The devices that we selected are actually going to be touch Chromebooks, kind of similar to what the board is using, only a little bit more industrial strength. These are amped-up units. They have a little extra memory, and they're about double the processing speed of the current Chromebooks, so they should be very effective. The reason we're going with the touch units is because most of the Chrome resources over the span of time are probably going to go to more of a touch-based resource. And getting our teachers out in front of that and giving them the opportunity to work with that is going to be essential. So, we are very thrilled to be able to work with TRA again. They've been exceptional. They're the ones that provide the warranties for all of our Chromebooks now, and they also were giving us $50 per unit to recycle and resell our old units, which is, which will drop the cost quite a bit. So, I would open it up to any questions that you might have.
I have a question. Maybe a couple. Sure. So, David, in the explanation under D, it has, it talks about PDS quoting the wrong unit.
Yep.
So, were they offered the opportunity to put forward another quote with the right unit?
They were contacted. We never really got an explanation as to why the wrong unit was quoted. The unit that was quoted was one that we had piloted probably over the past six months. We had high hopes for that unit. It was a little less expensive, but the problem we ran into was we had issues with hardware failures. I mean, we had approximately 30 of them being used by teachers, media specialists, and tech integrators, and they just, they just did not hold up well. We had several hardware issues with them. And they were about half the performance of the units we chose to go with. So, yeah, we didn't get a solid answer as to why that was. I don't know. Maybe they could not get the other unit and just chose to do that. And that's really out of character for them. They usually are pretty good with that.
So, all of the companies that provided quotes, other than PDS provided quotes on that same machine that you're offering today?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And maybe you know this, maybe you don't, but what's the difference of warranty between the TRA and PDS? Like, why is it $45 versus $69?
That's just the cost they bid in for warranty. And just so people realize, how that warranty works is it is a four-year warranty that caps. It is for as much breakage occurs, as much damages occurs. It basically limits the district's liability for that unit. Now, as you know, we do, we do have, our kids and our families have a little skin in the game in that the first issue of breakage is handled by the warranty. Second issue is also handled by the warranty, but they pay a $60 fee. Basically, they self-insure it at that point, and then third instance on is the full cost of repair or replacement. That has worked exceptionally well. We have one of the lowest repair rates of any of TRA customers. And I think we should be very proud of our kids. We've given them a lot of Chromebooks out in the wild, and with the exception of a few, they've all held up very well.
Okay. Now, the recycling of the old units, are any of those units, is that something where we just want to automatically recycle all units, or is it something that we want to hold on to a couple?
We talked about that a lot. The problem is the units are starting to fail, and by hanging on to them, you're, they're almost becoming more of a liability than a benefit. The batteries are going. Right now, there's a certain amount of value in them. That value is going to drop very quickly, as you can imagine. As they become non-functional, the value goes from $50 to almost zero that we may actually have to pay them to take them at some point. So, it'll be good to get that fleet out and get the new fleet in.
Okay.
Good questions.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your work.
All right. Thank you very much.
Please call the room. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Hushel?
Aye.
Hushel, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Hushel?
Aye.
Hushel, aye. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And finally, resolution number 14. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approves the selection of Technology Resource Advisors, TRA, as the vendor for IT project number 1074, staff Chromebook replacement as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Making me a little nervous there.
As a president, it isn't supposed to be a second, so. Anyway, again, we have an exciting resolution here with Dr. Dunlop, who's put in a lot of work, along with Mr. Sommers, on Chromebooks and technology. So, we wanted to give him a chance to just give us an executive overview here of what this is all about.
Sure. Kind of take you back a little bit to 2014 when we passed our first Learning Without Limits referendum. A big portion of that was, Phase 1 was giving staff the devices first. Well, those devices are now the first ones to get replaced because it's been about four years. The devices have held up well, but if you talk with our teachers, their batteries are[1756.13]